Good evening, everyone. We will call the March 18, 2013 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is the roll call. Charlene?
Sasso. Clayton. Nordstrom. Scott. Peterson. Doyle. Lewis. Roberts. Wright. Laurenti. We have Quorm.
And next we'll go to Reverend Gerald Yellowhawk.
My name is Gerald Yellowhawk. I'm a retired minister. The last 10 years since then, I have been translating scriptures from English into Lakota, so that is who I am and what I am doing. I am glad that I can come here tonight and to have the prayer part. I am a Lakota, and the Lakota people often sing their prayers, just like the Hebrew people. Psalms are mostly songs, and that's how we pray. Sometimes we just say very simple prayers, and the words are simple and short. So that is what I am going to do. For those of you, I am going to translate the words. When we pray, we say, "We lift our voice to you, the great spirit." And what we pray for, you know. And the prayer, as the Creator answers back, "I will answer you." He didn't say, "I will say yes or no," but "I will answer." And so those are the words to this Lakota prayer. In our kind heaven, the Father, we commit this meeting, and each of these men, women, representatives of the community, that you will give them wisdom and words for the benefit of the people in this community. So we commit this meeting to you. We ask it in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Yellowhawk. Next order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to tonight's agenda from staff or council members? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle, to approve the agenda as is. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will now go on to awards and recognitions, and if Marvin Tisdale could come up, and our Ward Four Council members. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the March 2013 Veteran of the Month recognition to Marv Tisdale, a 20-year veteran of the U.S. Air Force, and now an Air Force veteran on our City Council. Amanda Scott will assist with the proclamation.
Mr. Tisdale enlisted in 1975 as a hydraulic Titan ballistic missile technician, and when that career field was dissolved, he cross-trained to become a plumber. Throughout his 20-year career, he was stationed at numerous bases across the world, including McConnell Air Force Base, Moody Air Force Base, Cadena Air Force Base, Ellsworth Air Force Base, Rockville, Iceland, and McClellan? McClellan Air Force Base, before retiring and settling back in South Dakota. Mr. and Mrs. Tisdale have been united in marriage for 36 years, blessed with two children and four grandchildren, and another one on the way. Aside from spending time with his loving family, Mr. Tisdale is the president of his church, Peace Lutheran. Serving with other veterans is also something he is passionate about. As well as being a past commander, he assisted American Legion Post 315 this holiday season with the delivery of 40-plus Thanksgiving and Christmas baskets to needy families in the Box Elder area. Now Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale is also active in the Adopt a Highway program, helping care for a two-mile stretch on the Katrin bypass to Highway 79. He is ever the inspiration and was recently introduced into the South Dakota Amateur Softball Hall of Fame. Mr. Tisdale is currently employed at Ellsworth Air Force Base in the Water Fuel System Maintenance Section. In this section, there are 34 military and six other civilian members. Not a day goes by that is not affected by his never-ending mentorship, extensive knowledge of our craft, or all-around good nature and positive outlook. The impact this has on the section is particular, in particular, the younger airmen, is immeasurable. Having served his community with pride, honor, and integrity, Mr. Tisdale is a true patriot of our community, the United States Air Force, our country, I'm sorry, the United States Air Force, and our community. He is most deserving of Veteran of the Month. Thank you for your past and continued service.
Lynette, would you come up, please?
Probably not. Well, I didn't know this was going to happen. I had heard about it, but it kind of went for a while, and my boss out at the base kind of forgot about it too, and then I got a call, so I'm glad to serve Box Elder in Rapid City area. I've been here for a long time, and I enjoy the area. That's why we retired and moved back here. My wife works out at the Douglas School System as a third-grade teacher, and I think we'll probably stay for another, I don't know, 30 years or so, I suppose. But thank you for the award.
The Ward Three City Council members could come up, please. Chad Lewis and Jerry Wright, and Gail Holbrook, and his son Jeff, if you would come up, please. And as Gail is coming up, I'd like to say that there are two basic types of people. There's characters, and then there's people with character, and then there's a smaller third group of characters with character. And we have Gail Holbrook, who is a character, but he has character, and we're thankful to have you with us tonight, and we have a proclamation to present to you on behalf of a grateful community.
The March 2013 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to the community. We are pleased to present this award to Gail Holbrook. Gail was born and raised in Lemon, South Dakota, in 1923. At the early age of 20, like many of the greatest generation, he answered the call of his country and the world by serving in the United States Navy from 1943 to 1945. With a young family, wife Janie, son Jeff, and daughter Diane, they moved to Rapid City in 1959. Gail's work included being a merchant police, being a merchant police in Rapid City, and owning and operating Eastbrook Mobile Home Court for many years. Gail also actively supported and encouraged local sports such as high school, cross-country, and track. Gail's successful operation of his mobile home court and working with the merchant police to provide a safe community were in conjunction with his unselfish and generous donation of time and effort to bettering Rapid City, its youth, and its overall governance and growth. Gail's dedication spanned over four decades, an example to all of us that sharing one's talents and gifts are what make a community strong and attractive. Attractive, excuse me. Gail has attempted to better our community by serving on the City Planning Commission from 1974 to 1984, the City Council from 1984 to 1994, and the Painting County Commission from 1994 to 2004. Gail has been observed as a generous and involved person who is willing to listen and act in a way the community would be better off. Such dedication for a long period of time serves as a model for all of us in the Rapid City community. Thank you, Gail, for your service to and dedication to Rapid City. We are proud to have you as a member of our community, sir.
Gail? Who is more? By the way, he's my opposition for Ward Three. Whereas the City of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas the March Citizen of the Month is awarded to Gail Holbrook, a resident of Rapid City, and whereas Gail's dedication to his mobile home court operation and merchant police work shows a generous donation of time, he has given to a better community, and whereas Gail's commitment to help others shows true compassion for the City of Rapid City and its community. Now therefore, we, Alderman Jerry Wright and Chad Lewis of Rapid City, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim Gail Holbrook as the March 2013 Citizen of the Month, recipient in recognition of his innovation and leadership and many contributions that you have made to our community. I've got one little unscripted history here. His son, Jeff Holbrook, is beside him. Jeff and I were teammates on the Rapid City Cobbler Cross Country and Track Team. I ran cross-country with Jeff, and I was the team medic for track, and Gail was one of our avid supporters and helpers, and it's a historical note that the Rapid City Cobblers won the State A Track Meet for the first time in '64, repeated in '65, repeated in '66, and it's never been done since. So these two guys have done more than their share of this community. So it's a pleasure to know you and be a friend.
No, it's hot. You know, it's amazing that the two of the awards presented this evening just dovetail right together. My being able, and it's not that I'm nervous, but my legs give out. No, I'll hold on. The award for cleaning the highways just dovetails exactly into what I'm all about. These are people that don't have to be pushed into doing something for the county or the city or anything. They're just glad to do it, and that's what this is all about. And I really think it's, and the program is great, and don't, just keep it up.
Will?
Just one thing, which especially the council, I think you guys know that I've been on the council, and if you live long enough, one of these days you'll be up here accepting some kind of an award, but you've got to at least have to pay past 90 degrees. What's it going to look like?
Now if Ron Back could come up, along with Terry Waltersdorf and Dave Van Cleef. We would like to take a moment this evening to honor Ron Back, a longtime city employee who served our city from February 12, 1979, which by the way was about six months before I entered kindergarten, just wanted to know that, to March 26, 2013. We're very grateful for your many years of service to our community, and now to speak about that, I would like to hand the microphone over to Dave Van Cleef.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't in kindergarten when he started work. I was graduating from high school, but according to Ron, he started work with the city at age 11. I think there are laws against that now, but Ron had worked for the city for about 14 years and then was promoted to supervisor, and so basically has been at the helm of the wastewater treatment facility for the last 20 years. There have been a lot of changes throughout that time, a lot of projects, but without Ron's dedication and hard work, we wouldn't be where we are today and keep that facility operating. And so, Ron, I really would like to wish you the very best from the staff and the City of Rapid City on your efforts, and congratulations on your retirement. Ron is a brave man. He and his wife are going on a Carnival cruise in a few weeks. Thank you.
Just real quick, Ron, again, thank you so much for 34 years. That's a long time, and your services will be greatly missed by not just the water wreck, but the public works and the entire City of Rapid City. So thank you.
Man, a few words, that's what we like, Ron.
Now we have a proclamation for Brain Injury Awareness Month, and this was done with the assistance of Ron Sasso, Councilman Sasso. So Ron, if you could come up. Ron works in the field of working with people with TBI or traumatic brain injuries on a daily basis, and he helped bring attention to this important issue, and there are a number of proclamations that other mayors around the country are doing, and so we are standing with them and bringing awareness to this important issue. So I'll turn the microphone over to Councilman Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. And one little bit of trivia, actually, when I first met the mayor, was when he was working with folk rehab and was helping people with traumatic brain injury as well. So whereas traumatic brain injury is a serious national public health epidemic affecting Americans who live with a lifelong disability as a result of traumatic brain injury, which can be instantaneous, resulting in life-altering experience that can include the most serious physical, cognitive, and emotional impairments, and whereas each year, 1.7 million Americans sustain a traumatic brain injury, and whereas a traumatic brain injury is a contributing factor to a third of all injury-related deaths in the United States, injuries are largely the result of motor vehicle crashes, falls, assaults, sports-related injuries, or occupational injuries, and whereas traumatic brain injury was the signature injury of the war in Iraq and in Afghanistan, presenting new challenges for members of the military and their families, and whereas early, equal, and adequate access to care will greatly increase overall quality of life and will enable individuals to return to home, school, work, and community, and whereas the lack of public awareness is so vast that traumatic brain injury is known in the disability community as the nation's silent epidemic, and whereas March has been designated as Brain Injury Awareness Month to promote public awareness on the extent, causes, consequences, treatment, and prevention of traumatic brain injury. Now therefore, Mayor Sam Quaker of Rapid City hereby proclaims March 2013 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. Thank you. And just as a note, on Thursday at 6:00 PM at Community Transitions, there will be a free Brain Injury Forum at 6:00 PM, and basically there'll be a little training as well as question and answer, so just something that if you know somebody with a brain injury, if you've experienced that, come and just get some free information. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placing on the agenda by unanimous vote of council members present. We do have one speaker request form from Rick Crebel.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I've rewritten my introduction and my comments several times, and they're never right, so I just won't introduce it, I guess, but I have seen, you know, a couple of statements again lately. It seems like there's almost a weekly sheepshot about Compass or the people that support or oppose it or whatever, but anyway, I had some thoughts about Compass. Have you ever wondered what Compass must look like to city staff, particularly department heads and managers? Despite being called an audit committee, this isn't an audit like balancing a checkbook. This audit is questioning the intelligence, loyalty, and competence of city managers. When you said you were confident you will find savings and efficiencies, what you were really saying is you were confident city managers have done their jobs poorly. In fact, you were so confident of their poor management that you spent $200,000 to prove it. Then you told the taxpayers that the money is an investment because the city is being run so poorly that you easily save more than that. About wrap it up? The statement that Compass is a program that Rapid City needs and the statement Rapid City has great managers are two contradicting statements. They both can't be true at the same time. I guess you're going to have to choose. Oops, I guess you already did. Well then, at a minimum, since budget time's coming up, I suggest that taxpayers should not have to pay for quality control of poor city management. Since you obviously feel there is a need for Compass, and since the need for Compass can only be the result of poor management, I recommend that the funding of Compass come from the very city managers whose poor performance makes this program a necessity. I request that the payroll for all city managers be reduced by the same percentage represented by the $200,000. If $200,000 represents 10% of the payroll, then all managers should receive a 10% pay cut. Should Compass by some stroke of luck actually save the city some money, then return those monies back to payroll, and by all means adjust their salaries accordingly. monies back to payroll and by all means adjust their salaries accordingly. Personally, I don't think there's a landfill fiasco in every department. I believe that every department head and city manager comes to work every day, and they strive to do the best they can to save money, be efficient, and do right by their employees and the city taxpayers. And I believe it's an insult to the employees of the city. Thank you.
Your general public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to non-public hearing items, and we'll start with items four through 48. Do we have a motion to open public comment on four through 48?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two speaker request forms on item number 36, and we'll first go to Sandy Schwan on item 36. Item 36.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sandy Schwan. I am the president of Rapid City Summer Nights. The mission of Summer Nights is to create an arts and entertainment festival that will enhance Rapid City's public image, increase tourism, and assist in the revitalization and the growth of downtown Rapid City. Not all would agree with our mission, and in fact, to some degree, I think it's not entirely accurate, because Summer Nights is much more than just a festival. The leadership class of 2007 set out to form this event on the request of the Rapid City Downtown Association. We wanted to add a family-friendly element to our event, and quite frankly, none of us knew where to start. So, we enlisted the help of a young college student who happened to be my daughter. We didn't pay her. She worked endless hours, but we let her design and manage the street all by herself. And I think she did a good job, and along the way, she learned a lot about the community of Rapid City, and she learned a lot more about herself and her own abilities. Today, she's mentoring young people at Summer Nights. A young lady named Avery Fright asked to help out at Summer Nights. Her dad happens to work at Eagle Sales. And she is so dedicated that one Thursday afternoon, a ride didn't show up, and she walked from Rapid Valley to Summer Nights because she, quote, "didn't want to let Mallory We have lots of more Avories on our staff. We have Alex and Molly Connor. Their mother happens to be on our board. We have Emily Maltever, and she shows up and paints faces, and I think she has a good time. Molly Connor was so inspired by the Summer Nights team that she applied for junior leadership Rapid City, was accepted and graduated a few weeks ago, and I, for one, was very proud of her. I don't know if these young people will stay in Rapid City or go on to college and move to other communities, but what I do know is that wherever they go and wherever they end up, they will be leaders and community volunteers in their cities and with their communities. For those of you who don't know, the Juvenile Diversion Program sets up our fence at Summer Nights every week. And I would argue that they learn more about good decision-making by working alongside our vice president, Dave Goodwin, a soldier with the South Dakota National Guard, who provides them with a supportive role model and lends them a hand every week. They may not find that kind of a role model elsewhere, but they do at Summer Nights. The airmen of Ellsworth deliver our picnic tables and set up our beer stations every week. They give the Summer Nights team the opportunity to interact with them, to get to know them, and form that bond between their community and our community. These are people we would have never met if it wasn't for Summer Nights. In 2007, we planned Summer Nights. In 2008, our class ran it all by herself, just the 30 of us and Mallory. And now, it takes over 100 volunteers every week to execute the event safely and securely. These people of the community of Rapid City, they show up, they roll up their sleeves, they help us out, and they don't ask what's in it for me. They're there because they want to be there. Some might say they're there because it's fun, and some might say they're there because we serve beer, but I don't think that's why they're there. I think they're there because Summer Nights provides something that they don't get in other places. It's a place where we have provide leadership, camaraderie, and at the end of the day, a sense of community and involvement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandy. And now, we'll go to Dennis Halterman, also on item 36.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Dennis Halterman, owner of the Factory Slone. I'd just like to reiterate for the record, nobody's against Summer Nights. Those were wonderful stories, and those are wonderful things for our community. I agree with so much of what has happened and what's been said and what's been positive about it, but the overall planning hasn't been executed well. It got stuck at the win-lose stage of it, and I know this because I sat in on some of those original committee meetings, and I saw it get stuck at the win-lose. So, I can tell you that for a fact, but it's not too late to change stuff for 2013. In fact, the argument that it's too late to change things for 2013 is actually the event organizers' own doing. December of 2012, they assured us via this email right here that I've supplied, I copied everybody on council, that they'd meet with us to plan, talk about our concerns, and achieve better outcomes. Well, they failed to follow through that obligation. But one can't create the "it's too late" argument by one's own failure to act and then later want to receive the benefit of that in action. That's called latches. It's called sleeping on one's rights. It's not fair. It's not right. Many of us are negatively impacted by the street closures, by the early street closures. It's not revitalization. It creates an illusion of revitalization that's not sustainable and therefore is destined to collapse by definition anyhow if we don't get together and start talking about solutions. So, all we want to do is find solutions. We've got a robot on Mars right now sending pictures back. We can figure this one out and solve this. Keep the good. Get rid of the bad things. And what we don't want it to do is devolve into an us versus them. I know that that's how things get done. We pick sides, and we then argue for our sides and butt heads back and forth, but that just ends up in gridlock. Our Congress in Washington, D.C. right now is gridlocked using that same method. And I'm telling you, we're better than that. We're the people of Rapid City. We talk to each other. We work with each other. We can find solutions with each other. Of course, now this political hot potato gets dropped into your lap, and I'm asking you, please don't pay politics with our livelihood. Be brave, because the conversation of where to hold the best party in town that obviously has a lot of stuff coming out of it just isn't finished. That's all. We just want it to stop harming us. We want the conversation to continue until we find the win-win. I'd ask this council tonight to simply delay its decision for 30 days so that we can come and talk and find solutions. There's lots of them. I emailed a number of them to you last week, and I've had many, many more come through in my head, and I've talked to a lot of people that have had equally desires for solutions, even hardcore fans of Summer Nights, but we all want to get together and make this thing work and make it a win-win. So, please delay your decision for 30 days, and we can get together and come up with some solutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dennis. We do not have any further speaker request forms for items four through 48. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items four through 48. If any council members would like to remove any item for separate consideration, please hit your light. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 36, please.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 31.
So far, we have 31 and 36. Jerry Wright.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the exception of 29, 31, and 36? Okay, we have a motion by Lewis and a second by Laurenti. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 29. Jerry Wright. And Jerry, would you also read the draft resolution into the record as well? It should be linked.
...follows. A resolution reaffirming the city Rapid City's support for the President's Plaza project and further urging the allocation of new market tax credits for the project. Whereas the city-owned parking lot on the southwest corner of Fifth Street and St. Joseph's Street has been vacant for over 30 years, and whereas the city has worked for several years to partner with a private developer to construct a mixed-use project that will not only fulfill the city's needs for additional parking, but will also provide additional retail, office, and living space on the site and return the property to the tax rolls. And whereas in response to the request for proposal initiated by the city, President's Plaza Limited Liability Corporation has entered into an agreement with the city to construct a multi-use facility on the property, and whereas with the construction of Main Street Square and its associated shops and restaurants, and the rehabilitation of several other properties, the downtown core of Rapid City has experienced an exciting revitalization over the last few years, and the city believes the President's Plaza LLC project will expand on the improvements which have already been made. And whereas the President's Plaza is a cornerstone in the revitalization of downtown Rapid City, it will provide additional public parking spaces, convention and conference space, quality professional offices, and downtown living space to stimulate year-round economic impact on downtown businesses. And whereas the city council and mayor are in support of this project and have shown their own enthusiastic support through the city's substantial investment in the project, and whereas the city council and mayor of Rapid City urge the boards of the appropriate community development entities to fulfill, fully consider the use of the new market tax credits for this exciting project, now therefore be it resolved by the Rapid City Council that the city Rapid City fully supports the proposed President's Plaza project and the awarding of the new market tax credits to help this project become a reality dated this 18th day of March of 2013. I so move.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Roberts. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no.
I see you don't want to say this.
All right, we will move on to item number 31. Jerry.
Item 31 is to deny the request from Singer Properties LLC for an exception to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per city ordinance for the property located at 2123 South Plaza Drive, tract H Fountain Springs, Section 27 Township 2 North, Range 7 East, Rapid City, Pennington County, and to request the mayor to authorize the staff to work with the applicant on the appropriate placement of the sidewalk. I so move.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Roberts, and we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask a couple of questions of Terry Wolsterstorf, please?
May.
Hi, Terry. When I was streaming the Public Works Committee and they were discussing this item, I couldn't tell by the pictures if this sidewalk for this specific property that's going to be built or have construction done on it is actually going to connect to anything on either side. Is there any sidewalk in this area?
If I could, Mayor, I believe if you were to go to the, I would say, to the north, there will be one vacant lot, and then, so there'll be one spot where there won't be sidewalk, but then there's contiguous sidewalk further to the north.
So, is this lot, either side, connecting to an existing sidewalk?
I believe it will not currently.
Okay. Then, that is what I saw, and so, I know that there was also, and I asked Mr. Nordstrom, a warp, a right to something, something. In other words, they would allow the sidewalk or the owner would put the sidewalk in when the city deems that a sidewalk is going to be put in along the entire street? Is possible?
We do occasionally do what's called a warp or a waiver of right to protest. To be honest with you, technically, you don't have to have those for sidewalks because we can order sidewalks in at any time. The reason you would normally require the sidewalk to be put in at the time of construction is that then we don't have to go in and force that on a future property owner. Maybe it's two or three years or might be 10 years down the road. Usually, at the time of construction, that's the best time to install it. So, in areas like this where there's still undeveloped lots, it's not uncommon to have kind of a checkerboard effect on sidewalks. You know, at some point, the city may want to order the sidewalks in on the remaining lots, and that's kind of a balancing act for the council is, you know, at what point do you order that in? But we find typically it's easiest to get the sidewalks in at the time of initial construction.
And I can understand that, but also watching the stream of the Public Works Committee, there is a problem, and the sidewalk is having to be diverted, so it won't, it'll have to be tore up, or at least a segment of it will have to be tore up and reconnected when a solution is found for the, I believe it's the drainage issue on this road and actually at the one corner of this lot. Was, am I, did I see that correctly?
I don't know that anything will have to be tore up. At some point, if curb and gutter is extended to the west. Right now, it's more of a rural section with open ditch for drainage. I think the recommendation, funny, is that we would, we're going to work with the property owner, and we're going to get that in a location that will be able to tie in with future improvements as you go to the west. My hope would be that there would be no or very minimal sidewalk that would need to be removed or relocated.
And there's not a possibility that the sidewalk, because as proposed, it's going to be up five feet away from the road, the proposed curb and gutter. And yet, it was discussed that when the city actually allocates or requests that the sidewalks be put in, the sidewalk could easily be put in in conjunction with the road.
Keep in mind, there's already curb and gutter along this frontage, so any additional work further to the west would be new curb and gutter and grading work. You know, at that point in time, we could certainly order more sidewalk into the west. But ultimately, there's a reason to put sidewalks in right now is that potentially, people do walk out there, and if we can get more of them off the road onto the sidewalk, the greater distance, the better.
So, the sidewalk, though, what I'm getting at is if they put the sidewalk five feet off of the current road, it won't be modified in the future to be adjacent to the road? All along that stretch, it would be five feet off of the road?
Are you talking for the new construction as it goes to the west?
Connecting any of it. Is all of it, the part that you said is to the north of it, there's a vacant lot in between this lot and the sidewalk to the north, that north sidewalk is five feet off of?
I believe the sidewalks to the north that are already in place are property-lined sidewalks. I would guess most of this sidewalk would be property-lined, and then, as we get to the west edge where the curb and gutter stops, that's where we would probably realign it and bring it out to the road. I, to be honest with you, I don't know the exact details of how we would install that at this point. I think the recommendation just allows us, we'll sit down with the property owner, and we'll figure out the best alignment that works for them and for the city.
I'm just not so sure that it wouldn't be in the best interest to just forego it until that whole connection piece is done. I'll yield the floor.
And next, we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things, and there again, the property owner is in agreement on installing that sidewalk, and one of the things that we've, I've seen in my time on council is that a lot of times when we're looking at trying to get sidewalks installed, the concern typically is, wait, wait a second, we don't have sidewalk here, and we've heard the term sidewalk to nowhere brought up in the past. The problem is sidewalk always has to start somewhere, and we are looking at the bike and pedestrian master plan. Where this sidewalk would be being installed is not that far from an apartment complex, and it is a pretty good size, a pretty good stretch of sidewalk. And I think when we looked at it as Public Works Committee, looked at that, there would be a little jog in the sidewalk because of a drainage ditch, but I believe it looked like it would be very workable, very feasible, and would be worthwhile to get installed, because often, when we do try to order in sidewalks at a later date, it does take quite a bit of time. So, I will full-heartedly support the denial for the waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the motion on the floor is to approve the denial, to deny the, and so basically, if the motion passes, then it means the sidewalks would be ordered in. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ron, because it was my understanding in that meeting, too, the Public Works meeting, that the owners were happy to put the that the owners were happy to put the sidewalks in. The only problem that they were concerned with was where the sidewalk tied into the road because of the drainage going underneath the road, and we'd agreed with engineering to move the sidewalk out to the street, so that isn't a problem. One thing that I have to reiterate, like Ron said, is if we don't put it in now, since we have the opportunity, and the property owner is fine with putting it in, we could end up with another sidewalk like we had going on up to the mall in front of Simcom, where we had no sidewalk for 20-plus years. If we have an opportunity to put it in, and the property owner is willing to put it in, I think it's our responsibility to put it in. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, everyone understands the motion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
Motion carries with one no from Amanda Scott. And next we'll go to item number 36. Amanda, could you read this into the agenda for us?
Item number 36, to approve the event permit for summer nights for June 6, June 13, June 20, June 27, July 4, July 11, July 18, July 25, August 1, August 8, August 15, August 22, and August 29. I make a motion to approve, but also with a stipulation to allow the chief of police to make the stage, or to move the stage at his discretion based on public safety, health, and welfare.
Second.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson. And Wade, does that amendment conform with what you were looking for?
Yes. The chief of police already has the ability to revoke the permit if there was a violation of law or a violation of the permit. With the stipulation of the permit, this just sort of expands his scope a little bit to give him the ability to change something instead of having to revoke.
And before we proceed to the vote, it's important to note that on one of the sets of printed agendas, August 15 was omitted, and tonight's motion and the printed agenda in front of us tonight does include a summer nights event for August 15. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on items 49 through 56. We have a motion to open public comment by Lewis and a second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms or public comment. Did I miss anyone? Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion to close public comment. Motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 49, Amanda Scott.
Second reading, ordinance number 5914, ordinance amending provisions concerning tax increment financing district review process found in chapter 3.26 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Chad Lewis. Item 50.
To approve resolution number 2013-025, declaring miscellaneous personal property surplus, and I yield the floor.
Motion by Doyle and second by Laurenti, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption to give us some background on this item. Pauline?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the attached memo from Tracy Heitch explains what happened. They included the Zamboni in on a bid package without declaring it surplus first. I want to just clarify, in the memo, she referenced a surplus declaration policy. This is not a policy set by Finance Office, this is actually state statute that requires it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm going to go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the finance officer, if I may?
Go ahead.
My computer's locked up. I wanted to cite something, and it is being temperamental. Here it goes. Okay, the question I have, Pauline, and if you need time to look at it, that's fine. Statute 613-1, when they refer to the governing board of a political subdivision, what is the definition of the political subdivision?
That would be the local government, municipalities, school district, county.
So the enterprise funds, even though they have a governing board, that would not be a political subdivision?
No.
Okay. I just need that clarified. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Just so everyone knows, we, this is a situation where the Zamboni was surplus without being authorized by the council, bit of an awkward situation, but steps are being taken to ensure that that doesn't happen again. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Amanda Scott. Chad, did I cut you off? Chad, did I cut you off?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, item number 51. Jerry Wright.
Item 51 is to approve the request with the stipulations of a residential fire suppression system and a property fire mitigation for an exception from the Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Matt Benny and Brent Voorhees to waive the requirement to install additional pavement width and to provide additional easement width for the proposed access easement for the properties located at 4560 Cliff Drive and 4670 Cliff Drive, existing lot AR of Lot 4R of Block 15, and existing Lot 5R of Block 15 Canyon Lake Heights in Rapid City, South Dakota. And I yield the floor for the motion, but I would like to speak to this issue upon a motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Nordstrom to approve the request with stipulations. And Jerry, you have the floor.
I would like to speak against this simply on the basis that I feel that staff recommended a 50-foot easement and a 20-foot pavement surface, and I agree with that. And I feel that anything less than is setting a precedent comparable or comparable in development to what we have in areas of Canyon Lake and also in Rapid Valley where streets are constructed or built too narrow. And although this is an easement, I just will support in the interest of good future utilization and demands for utilities and access that we honor what staff has recommended, a 50-foot easement and a 20-foot pavement section.
Thank you, Jerry. And before we go to further comments, Terry, would you weigh, let's go to our Public Works Director, Terry Walsterstorf. Terry, my understanding is that there is one, there is a stipulation that the applicants agreed to be able to run water and sewer in the same easement. Can you please address that, and is that included in this motion?
I don't believe that is technically included as a stipulation in this motion, although I would recommend it. And what you're referring to, Mayor, is that as part of the discussion at the Public Works Committee meeting the other day, the discussion was made that the new sanitary sewer main, which they're going to extend down this easement, needs to be located in such a location that they leave room for a potential future water main to be co-located in the same easement. And I would like that as part of the stipulation. One of my concerns was that, one of the reasons we were asking for the 50-foot easement is that, so that we would have adequate space to install a future water main if necessary, without having to purchase more easement area. To be honest with you, we can make it fit in 40 feet, but they need to locate the sewer main in the appropriate location. And what I didn't want to see happen was have staff getting into a back-and-forth with the engineering firm and the property owners, and it would potentially look as though we were just being difficult to get along with because we didn't get our way on this particular recommendation. I just, I wanted to make sure that wasn't the case. So as long as they locate that sewer main in a location that leaves room for us to install a water main, we can work with it.
So Terry, help us out with the language for the amendment. Sounds like you're asking for an amendment to the stipulations.
I think just to clear things up, I think it would be good to have a stipulation that the sanitary sewer main be located in a location in easement that allows for future installation of a water main.
Do we have an, do we have an amendment? Who is the motion maker?
I was.
Okay. Is that okay with the motion maker? We'll just, and is that okay with the secondor? Who is the secondor? So if that's okay with both of you, we'll just add it in, so as a friendly amendment. And now we'll go to Ron Sasso.
And I believe that that was deemed acceptable by the property owner at the time, as that was something that was discussed. I believe that this is actually one thing to keep in mind, we are talking, this is a driveway for that property. So, I mean, basically looking at that, that will be, I think, very workable. And the other thing is, this will be putting an additional home on the tax rolls. So there will be additional financial benefit from that, so from that development, even though it's small, it's still a benefit to us. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion to deny the approval. If I can get a second, I want to maintain the floor.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to deny and a second by Jerry Wright, and Steve, you have the floor.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the Public Works Director, Terry Walsterstorf, some questions if I can, please.
Go ahead.
Terry, you mentioned the, you mentioned the stipulations. It didn't sound, you didn't sound real confident that that was really going to be what you're really looking for. Obviously, the staff wants us to deny this, and I believe you're right on this issue, and I believe that Alderman Jerry Wright is correct, because we're setting a precedence that I think future councils, and of course yourself, you'll probably still be here, will have to deal with this issue when further development happens there. Can you speak to the stipulation? Does it totally satisfy your concerns, or do you still have concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, from a staff standpoint, to be honest with you, we just, we didn't see any extenuating circumstances here that warranted a variance or an exception to the design standards, and that's why as staff, we recommended against it. And there was a lot of thought that went into the design standards that we have, they've been very well accepted. So obviously, if there's extenuating circumstances or unusual situations, we're more than welcome to entertain those exceptions. We just didn't see that in this case. So, you know, as far as the 40-foot width and installing water and sewer, I'm happy that at least we got the stipulation in the original motion here. We can make it work. Is it the best solution? No, we believe the best solution is to meet the design standards. But if we can't meet the design standards, then as a fallback, at least allow us to get those utilities or future utilities in the right location.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Before we go to further lights, Terry, a quick question to clarify. Would staff then be supervising or signing off on the plans prior to the installation of the first line?
Yes, we will.
And that's included in the stipulations?
It's part of our process.
Very good. Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've actually gone out to this property. I got to drive the mayor mobile one day and drove, went out and took a look at the property, walked it. And if you look at the property, folks, this is not, not to be confused, any, by any way, shape, or form, Canyon Lake neighborhood. This is a wide-open space with a cliff to the west side. There is no chance of a road going through there ever, unless you build one heck of a bridge into Chapel Valley. The fact that this applicant is willing to put in fire suppression and do fuel mitigation is huge. Most people will argue with the fire department about that all day long before they'll ever do it. They're more than willing to do that, it's an incredible expense to a house, you know, but they're willing to make that, make that concession as part of the negotiation process. We're not talking about putting in a large, this is not a large neighborhood full of all kinds of houses where they need a big street. This is a, you know, it's very, it fits into the neighborhood completely. If you look at the neighborhood, you'll understand what I'm talking about. Need to walk the property and see that this is an access that works, essentially the driveway into this property, it's not a big street that we need to be putting in there. I understand the design standards, I also think the design standards are there for new development, and I'm very well aware of those. And I think the fact that they're willing to work with the staff, and they're willing to accept the stipulation that we place a sewer in the water in the responsible areas, the bright area, to make sure they can, you know, if they have to extend that water main out, then by all means, I think we need to support that, and so I will not be in support of the motion on the floor, and I'll support the original motion once this one's defeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, and we'll go to Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said the other day at Public Works, it's seldom that I go against the recommendations of our city staff, because I trust our city staff as the experts. But as Chad very expertly just pointed out, the comparison to another place in town where we're talking about streets and comparing it to a driveway, it's just too big a jump. This is the addition of one additional house, so we'll have three that are fed by one driveway, and any further development would have to come back for further approval. So it's, I think we're just getting out of sorts here, and it's been discussed and re-discussed, and I think we all need to just move on and approve it. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I thank my distinguished colleague to my right for supporting this. I'm an engineer and a planner and all that stuff, and I think we're designing by exception, and we're somewhat becoming political engineers. First of all, this is not a driveway, it's an access easement. It's serving three homes, and so it's a little different. And I can tell you, historically easements get forgotten, and utilities are built and so forth, and you do need room to build. I think that it's a disservice to all future owners in that immediate area that may have problems. That's all. And I know, fully recognize, this is not a road going into Chapel Valley. This is access for these homeowners. Another thing about the fire suppression, keep in mind, this is only on one of three homes that's getting that. The other two are not. Thank you.
And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Call the question.
Question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? No objections, we'll proceed directly to the vote. The motion on the floor is to deny the request, to deny the request for the smaller easement. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
No.
Wright.
Yes.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Sasso.
Yeah.
Clayton.
No.
Nordstrom.
No.
Scott.
No.
Peterson.
No.
Doyle.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, we are now back to the original motion, and the motion is to approve with stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Roberts.
Aye.
Wright.
No.
Laurenti.
No.
Sasso.
Aye.
Clayton.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Doyle.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now we're to bids. Pauline?
First item for bid is the Homestead to Metal Ridge Drive Water Transmission Main Extension. We received five bids on this project. Recommendation is to award to Highmark Inc. in the amount of $366,390.25.
Motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson, and for everyone watching tonight, this is one of the phases for the airport water line. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is the West Chicago Street and State and Place Reconstruction and Drainage Improvements Project. Again, we received five bids on this project. Recommendation is to award to Highmark Inc. in the amount of $2563,298.75.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Third, sorry, third item is for the Jackson Springs Membrane Plant Treatment Chemicals. Recommendation is actually to reject all bids and authorize Public Works to rebid this, the five chemicals separately.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
55 is for the utility cut concrete. We received one bid on this project. Recommendation is to award to Brewer Construction in the amount of $72,095.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Lewis to approve. What was the engineer's estimate on this? Do we have an engineer's estimate?
No, the advertising authority was for the, let's see, $75,000.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final one is a little tricky. It's for the Canyon Lake Dam Reconstruction Vision 2012 Phase 4 Project. The reason why I say that is because of the funding sources needed to fund this project. The reason why I say that is because of the funding sources needed to fund this project. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $3,721,141.21, using $3,514,103 of the Vision 2012 Phase Four dollars, $107,038.21 of the Vision Municipal Infrastructure Contingency dollars within the Vision Fund, and $100,000 of the West Dakota Water Development District Funds to Skoll Construction Service, Inc.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nordstrom to approve. And we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Terry Waltersdorf some questions, please?
You may.
Thank you. Terry, you and I have been discussing this. The original bid went out and came back about $4.2 million. Then we rebid it, and it came in, and I'm just rounding to 3.8. So, we dropped about $400,000. And the only thing that changed between the original bid and this second bid is the risk of managing or controlling the water during the construction. Is that correct?
That is the only change to the specifications. That's correct.
And I believe, if memory serves me correctly, that when we went out for rebid and removed that risk, we were anticipating or hoping that the bid would come in at either the 3.5 or under. And my concern is, is that just because we removed the risk off the contractor does not mean that the risk of the water control evaporated and disappeared. It is still there, and now it is on the city's shoulders and the taxpayers' shoulders to mitigate any problem with the control of the water during this project. And my concern is also that out of the contingency fund, we are funding not only the made-up amount to be made up in this, out of the Vision Fund contingency, but we're also financing the contingency for the administration and consulting services that was in the consent item. And it actually totals about 285 out of the $350,000 in that contingency line item, leaving only roughly $60,000 in the contingency for any change orders or the mitigation of any of the problems, if there are any, for the water control risk. Do you have an alternate answer to fund any water control issues?
If I could, Mayor, keep in mind, there's still approximately $80,000 left in the 2013 line item for infrastructure contingency. In 2014, there's an additional $375,000 potentially available. So, we, we did, in our bid, we did include 15 days of potential additional pumping. That was, that was just a, to be honest with you, just an estimate that we threw in there so that we would have a bid item for it, an actual unit price per day. And keep in mind, the pumping we're talking about would be pumping that's above and beyond the statistical average for flow in Rapid Creek. And that changes from month to month, and those flows are spelled out in the contract. So, contractor's got to pump those statistical average flows on a daily basis. That's part of his base bid. We've got a unit price of about $2,600 a day. For any days that are above that, we threw 15 days in there. It's similar to what we do on a utility contract where we put a number in there for rock excavation. It's a guess on our part, we don't know. We've got some numbers, but there's always an inherent risk on those contracts. We see that on, really, every contract you guys approve has some inherent risk that the taxpayers are kind of sitting on. So, I don't see this as being unusual. I do think we have some funding sources available, if we see some. You know, there's still $80,000 just in 2013 for any overrun. So, I think we have some room to breathe there.
Have you made any calculations based on the timeframe that this project is supposed to go into construction, which is, I believe, September of this year through about March or April of next year? Have you done any calculations as far as what the taxpayers would be looking at?
If, if every day, now, keep in mind, we're going to start after Labor Day, and really, by the first of March, they're required to be able to pass the peak flows in the spring. So, they'll have the, the spillway will be basically complete by March. If you assumed we have flows above the statistical average all those days, you know, we could be looking at $400,000 worth of pumping. I just, to be honest with you, and when we bid it, that's, that's how the original bid was. They, they had to assume, because they're not going to take the risk as a contractor. So, we were paying for it even if it didn't happen. In this case, we're only going to pay for it if it happens. I'm, honestly, we're not going to have that many days of, of above-average flows in Rapid Creek. We just never do. We'll have some days. We put 15 in the contract, but, you know, we could have assumed 30. We just, we just picked 15. So, we thought that was a good number to throw in there.
So, your intention, just for clarification purposes, is to use the rest of the contingency in the Vision Fund for 2013 as well as 2014 to mitigate any other change orders or water control for this project?
If we had that much pumping that was necessary, yes, we would be back in front of you asking for a contingency.
I yield the floor.
And we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. I had two constituents in my ward challenge me on voting for this project. I just wanted to go on the record of saying the reason I did, and I will tonight, is the fact that that project was built originally, I believe, under the 2012 program, and Canyon Lake was restored for aesthetics and also water quality. And that this project was vetted in the 2012 development of funding for this era. And also, the fact that I had talked to the consultant with HDR that did the original estimate of the situation, and I've read the Stanley Consultant Report, and so I will be voting to support the project. Thank you.
Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. And just a question for Terry Waltersdorf. Just, if you could, I know we would not be looking at catastrophic flooding if we did nothing, but at the same time, what do we, what happens if we say, we're going to hold off on doing this for another five, 10 years? What are we probably looking at in regards to price tag on this as things change? Terry?
Yeah, I, I, obviously, we're going to see a cost of inflation go up on an annual basis. And keep in mind, construction cost inflation is about double what you're seeing in the CPI. I mean, we're, we're seeing 6% inflation costs across the board, it seems like, especially with concrete and infrastructure work. So, if you don't do the project now, I would suggest you bank the money away and add about 10% annually to it, because the project's going to have to be done at some point.
Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. The, my distinguished colleague from Ward Four, Amanda Scott, I thank you for the great questions. I applaud you for doing all the homework and research on it. But Terry, could you address more along the line of a trend line, if you will, looking at Rapid Creek and the flows that are coming through Rapid Creek about that time of the year? I'm trying to recall a chart way back, and this is probably obsolete information, what I was looking at, but isn't the trend for Rapid Creek to be going down over the years? So, that, my colleague from Ward Four, Amanda Scott, is concerned about the overages that in case the flows go up above the threshold. But I was looking at some data that said that overall average is going down on that stream. Am I using bad numbers or looking at bad numbers?
I don't want to see you're using bad numbers, but maybe misinterpreting them, I think. If your comment is that the, the statistical average has been going down from year to year, I, I don't think that that's accurate. Granted, we're in a drought.
Correct.
Season right now, so to speak. But that, that number fluctuates from year to year, obviously. 2011, we had some pretty high runoff numbers. Last year was lower. Keep in mind, we, we do have some control over Rapid Creek with our discharges out of Pactola, and that, that is what we'll do on this project. We'll actually drop the elevation of Pactola down this summer, down to a manageable level for storage capacity, because we will restrict the flow out of Pactola come September, so that the contractor typically only has to handle about 20 CFS down Rapid Creek. That's what we can pass through the bypass. So, we have the ability to do some adjustments on Rapid Creek. Obviously, if you get these big rainfall events between Pactola and Rapid, that's where we don't have much control over it, and potentially, you could see those numbers go above the normal.
Correct. Thank you for that reminder, Terry. I appreciate it. So, I hope that puts some comfort level for Amanda to address this from another angle, so that we do have the tools and resources on hand that, for controlling the stream other than Mother Nature. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. We have no further discussion. The motion is for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on public hearing items 57 through 66. We have a motion to open public hearing. Motion by Lewis, second by Clayton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms, but it needs to stay open at this time. We'll go to item number 57, which is a motion to continue until April 1, 2013. We have a motion by Bonnie Peterson and a second by John Roberts to continue item 57 until April 1, 2013. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to close public comment on items 57 through 66. Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on the consent calendar for items 58 through 63. And we'll first go to Richie Nordstrom. If you have an item to pull, please do so now.
Please, item number 58.
Item 58. Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve 59 through 63 with the exception of 58? Who made the second? Laurenti? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are on item number 58. Jerry, can you read this into the record for us?
Item 58 is to approve an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to Adopt the Rapid City Area Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and ISO move.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Peterson to approve item number 58. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the reason why I'm primarily supporting this motion is that we have got to look forward into the future, and this is, I'm going to say, one of the larger projects that's going to affect the city for years to come. And the, I don't know if there's anybody here in the audience that wants to speak to this, but there is the bicycle pedestrian portion of this, that a group is getting together to do more activities within the city, and they are very interested and wholeheartedly support the master plan moving forward. It is, has to do with getting Rapid City to move and just move forward. And to me, this is one of the largest projects we're going to ever see Rapid City ever do, and that's the introduction of bicycle lanes in Rapid City, and also having safe pedestrian areas as well. Mayor, did you want to, Mayor, if I can ask you to hear your comments on this, too?
Sure. I'm Mary Wickler Peterson. I'm with the Pioneering Healthier Communities Committee, and on behalf of the committee, we fully support the Rapid City Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan and also it being adopted into the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. We think it'll be great for Rapid City. It should improve our transportation options, and it should certainly improve our quality of life. So, thank you.
I'll yield the floor as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richie. And we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Brett Limbaugh some questions concerning this? Brett, just want to have a clarification, because I did have a couple of questions from some developers about this. Since this is being adopted into the Comprehensive Plan, and if there's any new future developments, the developers will be asked to accommodate bicycle lanes and bicycle paths into their developments going forward?
Yes, that's true.
And so, if, as they're going, because this is obviously going to add cost to their development or giving up some property when they're trying to consider their layout of their development, they will need to come before the Planning Commission and ask for a waiver not to consider or put in to construction at the time of the development if they want to be able to put that off going into the future as while that development's being developed.
Yeah, ultimately, there are a number of applications that a bike path could be dedicated on the plat or a zoning document of some sort. And so, if the developer compares what they want to do to the plan, and for some reason, they don't feel that they can or should accommodate it, then they would need to present that evidence to the Planning Commission and, in some cases, the council to request a waiver from, I should say, an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and relief from that requirement.
Okay, thank you. And then, just like our sidewalks, it is our intention as a city to promote the wellness and getting people safely out on, in order to engage in activities, physical exercise and stuff. So, going forward, the city will also be making, the Planning Commission will also be making recommendations, much like our sidewalks, on where we should concentrate on spending taxpayers' dollars to start with in trying to put in these bike paths and bike lanes.
Yeah, it's, that's true also. The Comprehensive Plan, the elements, transportation elements, and this being a transportation element are very useful in budgeting process.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Amanda, for the questions. And before we proceed to the vote, Brett, I have a question for you. We had visited about this recently, but I just wanted to clarify, have, did you send out the, has the development community been notified of, of this change?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we did get some email responses back, too, asking questions. So, yeah, we did send that out.
And can you summarize the responses that you received?
You know, I think we didn't receive a lot of responses, so I think it's fairly favorable. The ones that we had were just clarifications on how the plan was to be implemented.
And that notice went out to approximately how many people?
You know, I probably have, Patsy's in the audience, she might be able to give you a number, but we have a developer list that she had sent that out, too.
And we'll go to Patsy Horton, our transportation planner. Patsy?
We have a distribution list of consultants that we use on a regular basis in transportation planning. We also pulled a query from all of the developers that have submitted applications, as well as the applicants, the last four or five years. It was about 125 emails that we sent out.
And this was sent out when?
Immediately after you asked us to put that together. So, it was probably right after, right before Public Works.
Last week?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. For further discussion, we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I just wanted, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to say that when we're looking at these plans, I've had some, a lot of positive feedback, but I've also had some negative about bike lanes. But as a city, we have to look 100 years down the road and build accordingly, and the numbers of bikers are increasing, and I'm sure as gasoline prices continue to rise. And, you know, history has shown there's can be some big jumps in those things. And so, again, it encourages healthy activities and also building for the future. And so, anyway, I will be supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. You caught me off guard, sorry. The, the main point that I wanted to address at this time is that this will also provide another layer of safety for the citizens of Rapid City. Safety is a prime consideration that I always look for, and especially when we have projects moving forward like this. We are going to be in a proactive mode on addressing safety issues. I guess one way to describe it is whenever I'm putting on safety equipment, that's another expense that I'm going to have to undertake anyway. So, just to be on the safe side, I will, I will afford that extra expense to put that safety equipment on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richie. And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is something that I know we've already been trying to implement this. It's just formalizing this, I believe, more to the long-range planning. And I think a lot of citizens will be getting used to this, just like the bike lanes on Canyon Lake Drive, and, and more will be coming out again. Again, and I would like to echo Alderwoman Peterson's comments, too, that as price of gas continues going up, more people are going to be looking at biking, using, a lot of people will be walking, and the more, the safer we can make it for everyone, the better, and the healthier community and the more active community we have, the better. And also, when it comes to looking at sidewalks and walking, it's not just for young people. It's for everyone, you know? And that's something that we really have to look at, that the more mobile and the more accessible our community is, the better. And lastly, as it is Brain Injury Awareness Month, just remind everybody, if they're riding a bike, please wear a helmet. Thank you.
And now, we'll go to Chad Lewis. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I missed the email on this one, but I will say this much, folks, every time you put a new stipulation or new requirement in something like subdivisions, it's easy to say that you want, you know, safe roads and alternative form of transportation. I am behind the plan, make no bones about that, but the requirement part of the new development, just don't complain to me when your property taxes go up and the price of your houses go up, because every cost we add to a development cost does go into the bottom line of the cost of the house, and that's going to be passed on to the consumer. So, I just want to make sure it's understood that this is all fine and dandy. I'm definitely for it, but I'm going to tell you right now, lot costs are going to go up, mains house costs are going to go up, and then property taxes are going to go up with that. So, just throwing that in there, I know it sounds like I'm, you know, just saying that as a developer, but that's a reality. Those costs do get passed on to the consumer. So, just, I just want to make sure it's understood. As a 50 pounds ago former cyclist, I do support the alternative transportation, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that this does cost the public longer, more money in the long run, so make sure you're aware of that.
Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to voice my support for this as well. I think it's great from a public safety standpoint, but also from an extracurricular standpoint for our citizens. But I just wanted to make a note or put it out verbally to our community planning staff and our public work staff that I want to make sure, because I know that we have a grading system for our roads, and I just want to make sure, and I just want to caution my colleagues here on the council, that we need to make sure that we take care of those, I'm talking grades now, those streets that are still graded Cs, Ds, and Fs, make sure that we make those a priority first before we start earmarking funds for biking paths and those types of things, at least the taxpayers' money coming through the city. So, it's one thing for the developers, and I agree with Chad on that, that there obviously is a cost. They're not just going to eat it, they're going to pass it on to the consumer. So, but I just want to make sure that we take care of those Cs, Ds, and Fs streets before we start putting the taxpayers' money elsewhere. So, thank you.
Bill Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say I also support this. I am an avid cyclist, and when you ride on the road and there is not a shoulder, it becomes a challenge, almost a game, to try to keep your tires on the four inches of white line on the side of the road. And even when you're successful at doing that, there are motorists who think you have taken something away from them. And it becomes exceedingly dangerous trying to duck a rearview mirror, typically on a Dodge pickup truck, when it goes past your head at 50 miles an hour. So, having a designated lane will define what part is for motor vehicles and what part is for non-motorized vehicles, and it will make it safer for all those people who choose to ride their bicycles on the road. And I might say that our multi-use path, sometimes called the bicycle path, is probably one of the most dangerous places to ride in Rapid City. It's the place where I had the most spectacular crash of my life, because as you dodge dogs and children and joggers and whatnot who don't afford you the road, you know, the room that you need on your bicycle, it becomes more prudent to ride on the road. And as I said, there's many roads out there with no shoulders to provide a safe place, and now you're sharing the same space with a motor vehicle, and in a contest, you lose every time. So, I will support this, and I look forward to those developments. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, this will put more eyes on the road, so to address the concern about the infrastructure, somebody owes us donuts now for that phone going off. We've got a room full of people. But anyway, we've got a very, very great opportunity to have more eyes on the road. So, as Alderman Laurenti is speaking of the Cs, Ds, and Fs roads, this will have that eyes on the road to call into the pothole hotline, so that is still on the city's home webpage. So, if you see out there, you're traveling on your bicycle, please call that hotline if you're seeing potholes. Something needs addressed? Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. And before we proceed to the vote, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director a question. It's about this time of year that the phone calls, not a lot, but phone calls start coming in on the line striping and how the lines have worn off over the winter. And they haven't worn off quite as bad because of less snow this season, but usually, they're pretty much worn off by now. So, my question to you is this, is what is the plan in terms of keeping up with the line striping? Because this is probably going to impact the budget, and do we have an idea of what the impact will be?
I don't know that I have a good idea of the impact that this particular plan will have on the line striping budget. You know, obviously, we do our early spring striping program, and we do late fall, and there's some areas that we do a midsummer touch-up on it also. So, obviously, the more bike lanes we're striping, it will increase our, or impact our paint budget, so. But I really don't have a dollar figure, to be honest.
Ron Sasso?
And I might be going off of memory, but I think for the entire striping budget, I think we're around 75,000, I think, if memory serves me right. So, even if we're looking at adding, you know, 10%, 15% onto that, I don't think we're talking as significant an amount of money on that. But I do think that's something that is always good to keep an eye on, so.
Thank you, Ron. I just think it's something that we need to keep a close eye on to make sure that those lines stay striped, especially as people get used to this, the idea of having bike lanes, especially on Canyon Lake Drive and areas that just got bike lanes, we need to really keep an eye on those stripes. Any further discussion on the motion on item 58? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 59 through 63 have been taken care of. We'll now move to item 64. Amanda Scott?
A request by Ferber Engineering Company Incorporated for North Street Fire Station LLC for a second revised project plan for tax increment district number 69 for property generally described as being located north of U.S. Interstate 90, east of La Crosse Street, and west of Dias Avenue. I may make a motion to approve.
Second? Motion by Scott, second by Peterson, to approve. Any discussion? Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not sure who to direct the question to, but I'm a little confused as to why we would use the North Fire Station as part of a naming of a tax increment financing district, since the fire station is owned by the city and it would be tax-exempt. I'm just wondering why we would use that name in a TIF.
Tried to get you to vote for it.
And that's what I, just, I appreciate the honesty, and that's exactly what I was looking for.
Patsy?
Actually, this tip was the funding mechanism to build that fire station, and I believe the landowners just formed an LLC and called it that, because that's where the fire station was located. However, the property, the representative is here, if you'd like to specifically ask him.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm sure there was some thought put into the name, no doubt about it, but I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Is that one no?
Support.
Okay, one no from, motion carries, with one no from Steve Laurenti. Item number 65.
Second reading, ordinance 5911, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by a request by John Herr for G GSA Incorporated for a rezoning from general commercial district to light industrial district for property located at 4503 and 4507 South I-90 Service Road. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 66.
Second reading, ordinance 5912, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by a request by Tim Trihart for Community Health Center of the Black Hills for a rezoning from public district to office commercial district for property located at 725 East Philadelphia Street. I make a motion to approve in conjunction with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Peterson, to approve in conjunction with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 67, bill list. Pauline?
There are no additions to the bill list tonight, so the total is that which is before you at $6,945,992.84.
Second.
We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to wait to the last item on the agenda, but I just felt compelled to say something tonight, because I've been thinking about this gentleman since he passed away, but I just wanted to send my condolences to the Howard Palmer family in Lead, and I just wanted to thank all of you for giving me the latitude to do that. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second move.
We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Wright to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's 10 after 8, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1731.33]